Okay. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our hastily called special meeting of the town council. I would like to call this meeting to order. Oh, could we please call the roll?
Councilmember Durbin. Here, councilmember Richards.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember else has an excused absence.
Thank you. That brings us to oral communication. So if there's anybody who would like to address the council on any subject that is not on today's agenda, you may do so now by raising your hand. Would anybody like to address the council? I see no hands raised from the attendees. And so I will close oral communication and move to item three A to approve an unconditional commitment letter to attorney Lawrence Jacobson in response to his letter dated March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, Cara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have a presentation, so I'll share my screen. Can everyone see my screen? Right? So we are going to be talking about a settlement agreement in connection with a lawsuit that was filed by the town. I'm going to describe the lawsuit, describe the settlement agreement, and describe the local policy that is being requested this evening or this afternoon as a of the settlement agreement. So in terms of the lawsuit on June second, eight residents filed a lawsuit against the wildfire preparedness committee, the town council, and the town alleging two claims. The first claim asserted that members of the WPC had violated the Brown Act by texting staff and each other during the WPC's regular meeting of March first. The second claim asserted that the town did not timely produce documents pursuant to a Public Records Act request filed by the same eight residents who had filed the lawsuit. It should be noted that the records request required the town to retrieve information from the personal phones of volunteer committee members unless it took more time than most Public Records Act requests by the top by the town. So in terms of the first claim, which is the Brown Act claim, this claim involved three texts that were sent during the WPC meeting. The the first text was sent by a council member to another WPC member, asking the WPC member to make a motion. The second test text was sent by a council member to the town manager, asking a follow-up question on the preceding agenda item. And the third text was sent by a WPC member to a council member, apologizing for an emotional reaction to an offensive comment made at the hearing by a fellow commissioner. In reviewing this complaint, our office concluded that there was no Brown Act violation. And this is because texting between less than a quorum does not violate the Brown Act. Similarly, texting staff during a meeting does not implicate the Brown Act because staff is not a member of the legislative body and generally is not covered by the Brown Act. In terms of the Public Records Act claim, our office also concluded that there was no violation because the PRA does not contain a timeline for producing documents requested under the PRA. The PRA only requires that the town notify a requester within ten days, and there are certain allowances for extensions, but generally the PRA requires a written response to the requester within ten days notifying whether the Records Act request will be complied with by the town. The town complied with this written ten-day requirement and also produced hundreds of documents, including emails and texts from the personal devices of WPC committee members. So in terms of the statutory process for settling a Brown Act claim, there is a specific process set forth in the Brown Act statute. This process involves adopting a local policy, agreeing to refrain from the conduct alleged in the lawsuit. This local policy is referred to as an unconditional commitment, and it is contained in as exhibit A to the settlement agreement in your packet. The the settlements, when when you enter into a settlement under the Brown Act, they they typically come down to just a cost benefit analysis. And the question is, is it worth spending taxpayer dollars on unnecessary litigation when everyone agrees on the substance of a local policy? Here, we anticipated that the town would spend up to $200,000 litigating the case, and additional staff member and and volunteer committee members would also be dragged into this litigation. As a result, the council directed us to settle the case. If the town adopts a local policy, the Brown Act requires plaintiffs to dismiss their lawsuit with prejudice. Now, it's important to note that the town, under this statutory process, has the ability to withdraw the local policy at any time. However, they must notice a public meeting and they must provide thirty days' notice to the the per the the person that the letter is addressed to. And in in this case, it's the resident's attorney, Lawrence Jacobson. If the town withdraws the local policy, plaintiffs are able to reactivate their lawsuit. Finally, if the local policy was adopted as a result of the lawsuit, the town must pay plaintiffs attorney's fees. Here, the town was clearly negotiating in good faith to adopt a local policy before the lawsuit was filed. However, as part of a global settlement, the town council agreed to pay one half of the resident's attorney's fees in the amount of $15,000. So now I want to summarize the local policy. This policy applies to the town council and to all commissions and committees that are formed by the town council. We currently have eighteen commissions and committees in the town. The local the local policy was designed primarily to address remote and hybrid meetings where texting has begun to take the place of personal conversations that typically in 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 in-person meetings would take place directly on the dais. Thus, under the local policy, council and committee members shall not text, email, or communicate privately with one another during public meetings. Second, council and committee members shall not text, ma- email, or communicate privately with third-party consultants during public meetings. The policy does not prohibit texts between council and committee members and staff during the meeting that that relate to well, it period, that there the staff communications are not covered by this settlement. Also, the settlement does not prohibit the use of electronic devices to access packet materials and to perform research I research on any of the agenda items. Texts between council and committee members and the public are also permitted. And finally, council and committee members may text the chair to report internet problems or to request a break. So to put these issues in context, when legislative bodies meet in person, it is very common for council and committee members to have private conversations with one another during a meeting. Typically, these would involve conversations directly on the dais. They would be quiet. They were private conversations. The public generally could not hear what was being discussed. Also, it's common for council members to pass notes amongst one another. And you see this in larger city councils more frequently than smaller city councils. But remember, the Brown Act applies equally to small and large jurisdictions. There is no special carve-out for small jurisdictions. The prevailing view view is that the these types of conversations on the dais do not, as long as they do not involve a quorum, do not violate the Brown Act. Similarly, private conversations frequently frequently occur with staff members. A staff member will come and and there's a question and that type of interaction takes place in a in a standard meeting very frequently, and that does not violate the Brown Act. So to illustrate this, I have I have a clip from a Los Angeles City Council meeting. You see, this is the the chambers that the Los Angeles Council meets in. This is, I took a pre-COVID clip so that you can see the types of routine in-person interactions that occur at a council meeting. To set this up, you have this this area right here is for council member seating. The meeting, the area over here is also for council members. The area right here in the center is for staff members who are helping assist, conduct the meeting. And then this table over here is for staff members who are making presentations to the council. This is the public area. You have people that are lining up here to make public comment. In this clip, you'll hear the the council president speaking. The council president is not shown on the screen. They have a seat above the staff table up to the right. So I'm going to play this clip so you can get a sense of what happens in typical council meetings.
This I'm the director of organizing with Sage Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. And we we have a tenant clinic where we provide.
So I'm going to just stop it here. There is, you can see right here, there is some interaction going on between a council member and a staff member. Now, in Los Angeles, each of the, there are fifteen council members. Each of the council members have their own staff. There are staff that also work for the city of Los Angeles, but each council district also has their own staff between fifteen and thirty staff people. So it's common for the staff members of the individual council members to to sit or stand behind all of the council members. And they, the staff members that are congregated behind the dais, you will see, they walk in and out. They are they are routinely checking in with their council member. They have papers relating to something else that need to be signed, and they bring those into the council member. And there's a lot of action going on. Also, in the lower screen right here, there are two council members that are talking amongst to to one another. And there is a third person right here, who is probably a staff member, joining in on that conversation. So I'll continue with with the the clip just to to show this example.
Publicity Prevention Services to five hundred low-income venture families every year. And the people in our constituency are overwhelmingly severely rent burdened, meaning that they have to sacrifice basic necessities for themselves and for their family.
Hold it tight, please. We can you, we need to have some order in the chambers, please. We are holding a published comment here on this item. So please, if you're making your way out of the chambers, please do so quietly. Thank you. Continue.
So many of the people that are in our constituency are extremely vulnerable to being displaced even by small rent decreases. Oftentimes, only fifty-dollar, hundred-dollar rent increases enough to force them either to live on the street or to leave their community.
So I'll I'll stop it here. You can see that the these folks, these council members are continuing their discussion. This council member is talking to a staff member. There are a couple of different staff members that come up to this particular council member and and talk during the meeting. There's all kinds of action. Council members get up from their seats and and talk to to staff members, both district staff and the town or the the city of Los Angeles general staff. Sometimes you'll see council members go to the audience and and talk to public members. There's a lot of action taking place at these large city council meetings. So just to to wrap up, it is, it is my legal opinion that the texting that occurred on March first did not violate the Brown Act for the reasons we discussed above. The proposed local policy goes well beyond the requirements of the Brown Act. And I I do note that while this process for adopting a local policy is far from ideal in that the policy was essentially driven by eight residents and their attorney with very little involvement from the community, or more importantly, from the town committees who will have to abide by this policy. We never let the less think that it is a good thing for the council to take this step and adopt this this local local policy in order to settle this lawsuit. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Cara. Are there any council member questions? Now, I I have one, Cara, could you talk a little bit about your work with Cal Cities and the Brown Act Committee there?
Yes. So I I've been a member of the California League of Cities, which is now referred to as Cal Cities Brown Act Committee. This is a state organization, and it consists of city attorneys from across the state. I've, this is the second multiple-year term that I've been on the committee. And we've, we actually talked about this particular example, and the committee agreed that there is no, there was no Brown Act violation here. That being said, all city attorneys are struggling with text messaging during meetings. It is not something that is specifically governed at this point by the Brown Act. And we do think that it is a best practice not to text during meetings, and that is one of the reasons why we are recommending this local policy. But a local policy is very different from a requirement under the Brown Act.
And do you know the area of legal practice of the opposing counsel, the the plaintiff's attorney?
I believe he's a bankruptcy lawyer.
A bankruptcy nurse, or not a government law or Brown Act expert?
Correct. I believe he's a bankruptcy litigator.
Okay, thank you. And in in your discussions with them, with their attorney, did that cause any issues that he really wasn't very familiar with the area of law that he was suing the town about?
Um, it it's, it was challenging to negotiate a a local policy with somebody who does not have experience or the practical, the practical day-to-day activity with of of public meetings. So that 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 was challenging, yes.
And and is it, is it correct that at one point he wanted the council to take action without waiting for a twenty-four-hour notice period that's required by the Brown Act?
Yeah, there were some discussions about that. The the attorney wasn't, didn't seem to be entirely knowledgeable about the other aspects of the Brown Act, such as the the public notice period and 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 the various requirements related to to the Brown Act that the council must follow.
And and despite that, he's run up a bill of, well, I mean, we're we're paying half of it, about fifteen thousand dollars. So his bill will be around thirty thousand dollars for the work that he's put into suing the town, and that doesn't include the costs on our side. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Thanks, Craig. Cara, to your knowledge, are there any cities in San Mateo County, big cities included, like Daly City, San Mateo, South San Francisco, Redwood City, that have a policy like this?
Um, to my knowledge, there is, there are none. It's some, but I will say it is something that city attorneys are looking at because we do envision that that hybrid meetings and remote meetings are going to continue well into the future. So cities are are certainly looking at it, but you know that I'm not aware of any policy that is restricted, is as restrictive as this particular policy is.
Okay, so just so I understand, we are looking to adopt a policy that even the big cities in the county do not have.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other council questions?
Um, sorry.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Uh, because this now would be applying to all the committee, the town committees and commissions, can you describe what that impact will be in terms of operational? I mean, how will this change how our local, you know, volunteers are going to be impacted if they're going to be serving on committees and commissions?
Right. Well, the the town council did give us direction a while ago to provide Brown Act training and training on the policy manual because we have found that many of our commissioners are are new in the past couple of years and have not had that that training. COVID stopped a lot of those trainings. And it's, the Brown Act is something that that not many people are familiar with. The town council is very familiar with it. You deal with it day in and day out, but your volunteers are are not familiar with it. They have not experienced it before. And so I think that any additional restriction is going to be challenging to them. We we have prepared in anticipation that you will be adopting this local policy. We have prepared a memo informing the the boards and commissions of this new policy. We'll be rolling that out to them. We'll be asking committee chairs to agendize this on their on their agendas and and inform committee members about it. Currently, the town attorney's office does not staff most committee meetings. Occasionally, the town attorney will attend planning commission meetings or ASCC meetings. At this point, we don't recommend that the town attorney start to attend these committee meetings because it would be big expense for the town to do that. I don't think that's warranted, but you know, it it is at some point, the more restrictions you place on town volunteers, there are going to be some some resource issues involved with that.
Mary, I see your hand is still up. I don't know if that's just residual. You have another question? Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no more council questions, then I will open public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this item? I see Rita's hand is up. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for taking my comment. I was surprised to see that example of a council meeting. I mean, what we're looking at right now is more of an example of a Portola Valley council meeting during our time in Zoom and the hybrid meetings I've been attending seem to be working out nicely. And then I also remember all of the meetings that we had in the schoolhouse, and they didn't look anything like what was shown from LA Town Council meeting. And when the residents usually speak at a public meeting, um, I didn't see the council members walking around the room. I I found that particular video clip quite disrespectful to the residents that were, you know, saying what was on their mind while all of that action was going on. That's not typical for our small town of forty-five hundred people. So perhaps there's another example that could be shown or you know, something, but that as an example of this is what a typical meeting is, that's not this town. I have gone to many meetings, and I have not seen that type of behavior in this town. And when the residents speak, like I said, you know, maybe it's different when Zoom because people can be doing other things, but when we were present in the schoolhouse, you know, people listened to what the person was saying. My other question is, how will the individual members of the committees receive this updated information since so many of the committee meetings and the council meetings have been counseled lately, and some have not happened in quite some time? So what's the procedure for all of the committee members and council members to then receive this updated information? Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Next hand I see raised is Karen.
Hi, I have a question on the policy going forward, in particular, on response to third-party consultants versus the public. And I haven't, I'm struggling with exactly how to define that. So because you use the wild, this is about the wildfire committee. Would WFPD be considered a third-party consultant? And so would that be okay to text them during a meeting? And then I was also a little confused about the concept of public. So let's say there's a active person in the public that's not on the committee that has an interesting item on the agenda and is coordinating something or perhaps informally or formally, would they be a third-party consultant or would they be the public? And I could understand that the public could be, you know, friends and family texting about, you know, normal things off the agenda. So a little bit of clarification, that would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I see no further hands raised from the public. Oh, Bob Turcot's hand just went up.
Go ahead, Bob. Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak. I want to applaud the town council for adopting this reasonable policy of prohibiting secret communication among committee members about an item under deliberation during a public meeting. The demoralizing effect of such secret communication is obvious and was documented by one resident in a poignant resignation letter in which he described his great disappointment when he learned that a call that colleagues on the committee were secretly maneuvering during a meeting for an outcome that was contrary to what he in good faith had been advocating publicly. I especially want to applaud the residents who pursued this, who at significant personal expense risked their reputations and standing in the community in order to insist that our town conduct its business legally. That takes a lot of courage, and the residents of Portola Valley owe the plaintiffs a debt of gratitude. It's unfortunate that the policy prohibiting secret communication was not adopted at the beginning of this process. It would have saved a lot of time and expense. But we can have some faith restored that deliberations in public meetings will take place publicly as the Brown Act requires. We can also be encouraged that residents will insist on compliance with state law, even if that means resolving Um, we can also be encouraged that residents will insist on compliance with state law, even if that means resolving differences of opinion in the courts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Um, I'd just like to clear up one misperception there created from Bob's comments. The um policy um was offered by the town to be adopted very early on in this process. And the defendants decided to file a lawsuit instead of engaging in the discussion with the town to agree on that as a form of settlement. So the town tried very hard to avoid a lawsuit, to avoid the expense. Um, and the uh complainants um did not pursue that path. Instead, they decided to file a lawsuit and run up the costs. Um, Cara, I don't know if you have anything further to add to that?
Yes, that that is correct. Um, I also wanted to to respond to two of the public comments, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I I actually on Rita's comment, I I agree. I think our um council members, both uh current and in the past, have been far more respectful to public comments than um uh not necessarily always perfect, but certainly much more so than a lot of what we're seeing in the L A video. But I think you're you were addressing whether or not that there were any violations of Brown Act rather than that that's a model for what we should be doing in Portola Valley. Is that right?
Absolutely. And so I did want to clarify the reason why that um why we showed that video was to demonstrate that this type of conduct takes place on a routine basis in large cities, and it does not violate the Brown Act. That is the way many cities operate. Um, this council, it has not operated that way as as Rita mentioned. Um, and this policy is something that again goes above and beyond the Brown Act. It's it's just not required. Um, I also wanted to respond to the question about the third party consultants. Uh, when we negotiated um this um local policy, I did ask the um attorney for a definition of third party consultants, and they did not want to define that term. Um, again, this is uh the unfortunate outcome of um having this type of policy um uh thrust on us through a legal proceeding as opposed to a more robust uh traditional community dialogue on it. Um, but what the advice that we will be giving to our local committees on what constitutes a third party consultant is um a consultant that is retained by the town to perform to perform some work. And what I envisioned, um, this reference was, um, the reason why it was inserted was um, the to uh talk to um encompass somebody like um in a uh the consultant that has prepared the evacuation report that committee members should not be texting that third party consultant during uh the meeting. Um, and that that would be prohibited under this policy.
Cara, can I ask a a follow up clarification? Um, so if if we do adopt this uh declaration today, um, the provisions of the declaration itself and the the Brown Act that um is kind of behind this whole thing um would allow us to ha- have a community process for thinking about what the policy ought to be and for if we wanted to define things like third party consultant or change that phrasing, um, the council will have the option to essentially rescind this unconditional declaration and replace it with a new policy if we wanted to in the future. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, as I mentioned, though, there is a po- there is a procedure under the Brown Act that if that policy is rescinded, um, the plaintiffs can reactivate their lawsuit. Um, and so the um presumably, if the policy were to just be refinements or improvements, um clarifications, that type of thing, the plaintiffs would not reactivate their lawsuit, but you you don't, you never know.
Okay, thank you. Sarah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a brief comment that um Bob Turkot's characterization of the content of the text, I just want to say is categorically false. I don't want to get into uh the detail there, but if anybody um, you know, in the public now or later wants to reach out to me directly, I'd be happy to discuss it.
Yeah, and I I think you're talking about what Bob was saying was being alleged by the member who resigned from the committee. So he was indirectly saying it.
I'm saying um his characterization of what was the content of the text is totally inaccurate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I will bring this back to the council then for um discussion. Um, would anybody like to discuss this? John, go ahead. You're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
There we go.
Um, yeah, so well, I just want to say that uh in the past, we've always, we've always taken the appearance of a conflict or impropriety seriously and made every attempt, had every attempt to to correct those appearances. Uh, I I can see how this might have been have have and might have appeared as an impropriety to some people and but I but it clearly was not a Brown Act violation. Um, that being said, I think it makes sense to make sure that such appearances don't occur regularly. And I'm I'm confident, though, that we would have reached this point without going through this nonsense of the lawsuit. Um, and the unnecessary expenditure of public funds, our tax dollars. I think there is a notable hallmark of Portola Valley governance in that we have, we are a bit slow of getting things done, primarily because everyone gets a say. I don't know exactly what has happened to patients in collegiality that have avoided this sort of mess in the past. But uh it's a real blow to the town if we have actually lost it. Um, and so I hope this experience will lead to people to think a little more carefully before we get dragged down this way again. I will reluctantly support this effort. I, as I said, I think it makes sense to have a policy that that avoids the appearance of conflicts or appearances improprieties. But I am disgusted by the way this all came about. That's uh all I'll say for now.
Thanks, John. Sarah.
Um, Craig, are we are we are you wanting broad comments right now or are you just taking questions?
No, we're on to comments, broad comments, discussion, and eventually a motion.
Okay, so I just want to say that um I would like to clearly state in the strongest possible terms that none of the actions on the night of Tuesday, March first were Brown Act violation and share my perspective on the content and sequence of events that evening. I also just want to apologize to the volunteers of the W P C for the distraction this has caused and thank all of you for your countless hours and good luck work. Um, for background and context, the March first W P C meeting was the second night in a row that was an extensive meeting. The previous night, the ad hoc housing element committee meeting, committee meeting ran for over six hours and ended at ten forty five. The text exchanges and question at the March first W P C meeting occurred nearly two hours into the meeting after discussing a single organizational item, item moving a subcommittee to a different town committee for over an hour. And the W P C had several important agenda items still to cover that night, including the annual goals and priorities for the wildfire preparedness committee for the year twenty twenty two. The first text was to committee member Jennifer Eustah. It was two hours into the meeting and again, after a six hour meeting the night before, and the committee had been discussing the organizational change of moving the subcommittee of a of the W P C into a different committee, the E P C, for over an hour. And at that point, the dialogue was circular, in my opinion, and well passed ready for a vote. So I asked Jennifer Eustah by text if she'd be willing to make a motion because as a ta- a council member, I was sensitive to making a motion in a council meeting. And although my text said I can't, my intent was that I preferred not to, although doing so was legal. Asking somebody to make a motion is co- is a common occurrence in meetings. It happens all the time. As an aside, I do agree with the comments that were made that night from the public that council members should not be voting members of any committee, and I'm happy that we've since made that change on the W P C. The second text was an exchange with the town manager Jeremy Den- Dennis. Jeremy had been in the meeting but had to drop off the Zoom, so my text to him was to update him about the result of the vote on the structural item of moving the subcommittee from the W P C to the E P C and to ask a question. The text exchange took place after the vote, and the question was reaction was in reaction to a statement from the chair of the E P C that the proposed organizational change would not be accepted by the E P C. My text to the town manager was a process and organizational structural question that I would have asked him or any staff member in a meeting had any had someone bet been there, similar to what Cara showed in her presentation. Communication with staff is not subject to the Brown Act. The third text was from the chair of the W P C, Michael Tomars, who was apologizing for his emotional reaction to some offensive comments that had been made during the meeting. None of these exchanges amount to a Brown Act violation. None represented anything close to a quorum, which would have required communicating with five of the nine committee members about committee business. And I'm certain that all of these exchanges would have occurred organically had we all been sitting around a conference table in person together or in um and you know, on the dais versus on Zoom, which in my opinion can inhibit the kind of the natural organic dialogue, particularly in these larger meetings. At this point, the legal actions filed by this small group of residents related to these exchanges have cost town taxpayers nearly fifty thousand dollars. Instead of a lawsuit, I wish one of the eight concerned plaintiffs would have reached out to me or my colleagues or staff to express their concerns about the meeting that night and about texting during meetings more generally, if that was the actual primary concern. I know all of us would have said, okay, let's talk, let's roll up our sleeves and figure out how to make these changes to adapt together to this new world of governance through Zoom meetings, which has become the new normal since COVID. There's absolutely no resistance that I'm aware of to the creation of a policy about texting during meetings. But the policy proposed here is not required by the Brown Act. I'm certain, as we've discussed, that this very restrictive policy would never fly in a large city where private communications between members and staff take place all the time. If we want to continue to be a volunteer run community, we need to be able to communicate and collaborate with one another directly, not through attorneys and lawsuits. I feel this lawsuit has been an unprecedented disruption to the culture of our community and an absolute waste of taxpayers' time and resources. The suggestion that something unethical was going on is ridiculous. I didn't run for council to spend my volunteer time away from my family and kids in the evenings, often several nights a week for meetings that can last, you know, three to five hours long for some unknown nefarious objective. The suggestion is offensive and beyond off base for anyone that knows me. The lawsuit has been frustrating, divisive, and frivolous, and I worry about its longer term impact and how it could discourage good people from stepping up to volunteer and get involved at all levels going forward. I know there are calls from the PAC, which includes plaintiffs in this lawsuit and others for change in the council. But as the newest member serving just over a year and a half so far, I feel this frivolous lawsuit only serves to discourage new and reasonable people from getting involved. Also, being coerced to come up with a policy proposed by just eight residents without any general buy in, let alone discussion from the commissions, the committees, and the residents is contrary to the town's ethos. I'm also concerned, as I mentioned in my question, about how the town's eighteen commissions and committees will be able to get real work done if the focus shifts to compliance with parliamentary procedure and form formal procedural rules. I feel this lawsuit has put us on a formalistic path that runs counter to the small town volunteer committee driven spirit of our town. So given I'm so strongly opposed to the notion of a settlement for all the reasons I've just shared, why have I agreed to a settlement? As Cara mentioned, the settlement came down to a cost benefit analysis. As mentioned, it's estimated that the litigation would have cost Portola Valley taxpayers up to two hundred thousand dollars in legal fees and over fifty hours of staff time. Although our attorneys were ready to litigate the case because there was never a concern that the text message violated the Brown Act, and I would have been, and I would have had this been a personal case versus a case against the town. As a council member and therefore a steward of the town's resources, I feel the settlement is the most practical and fiscally responsible outcome for the town and its taxpayers. That's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Mary Ann.
Thanks. I have I have no written remarks, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. I think this is a very, very sad day in Portola Valley town government that we are being forced to adopt a policy that I think is going to make it very difficult for the volunteers on the committees. I don't think it will be that difficult for us on the council, especially those of us who meet in person. This never would have happened in an in person meeting. I can tell you that as the person who's been on the council the longest. When we used to meet in person, we didn't text a lot. Maybe we texted our spouse to say we were going to be home late, or did the kids do the homework, but we didn't text each other because we were there, just as Sarah said. If this was in person, Sarah would have said, hey, can you, somebody please make a motion? I've done that before in a lot of meetings, maybe not yet. I don't know if I've done it in council meetings. I've certainly done it in committee meetings and county meetings. Um, I am just, I guess John said disgusted. I'm just sad. I'm just disappointed that it's come to this. We are good people. Maybe you don't like us. I know you don't like me because I've seen the emails that people on this committee sent to each other. The story cuts both ways. We've seen them too. And there were very, very unkind things said about many of us, almost entirely women. One of the things that was said about me is that I'm unfit to serve. Whatever, I won't be serving that much longer. Anyway, I went out on a big tangent there. The people who serve on the Portola Valley Council do not get paid. We have more committees than any other city in the entire county, including the big cities. I think we do more work. Um, we have a hard job in that it's a very small insular community. The people are educated, the people are engaged so that they come to the meetings. They're very demanding. I mean, that's good, but it's hard. And we aren't here to aspire to higher office. We do this because we want to give back to the community, because we want to leave it a little better than it was before we started serving. We are not, we are not well people. We are not getting kickbacks. We are not sending secret messages. Having said all that, I agree with Sarah. We've got to cut our losses. If we litigate, which I'd actually love to do, we're spending more money, we're taking more staff time, we're putting more committee members on the line because their emails and texts, et cetera, will be subpoenaed. And we just can't do that. We've got to stop this nonsense right now and just get it done and move on. But I'm sad. I'm sad that this is where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Yeah, I think um much of what I was going to say has already been said. Um, you know, this this lawsuit, um, whatever its intentions, and I'm pretty sure that it was essentially deliberate political harassment of um some of these uh town volunteers who are giving their time, as Sarah said, for hours and hours, um, multiple nights in a row for many people who are serving on multiple committees. Um, you know, I think it's no coincidence that they hired a bankruptcy attorney, a corporate bankruptcy attorney, instead of a government law expert who actually understands and has read the Brown Act. Um, the most basic reading of Brown Act would tell you that cannot have a meeting without twenty four hours of notice at least in order to take an action um that their attorney was asking us to do. Um, again and again, as we were going through these negotiations uh in good faith to try and figure out what kind of policy was appropriate from before they filed their lawsuit. Um, we were having these discussions and again and again, we were rebuffed by the people who are suing us. We were buffed by their attorney um who did not want to take the easy approach, take the Portola Valley approach of having a discussion, having a public process to establish a policy that works for everybody. Instead, these eight residents um and their attorney who did not understand the law at question here continued to bully the town, threaten us with huge expenses in order to get their particular version of this policy, which, as we've heard from Karen, is unclear and clearly needs to be revised and clarified so that our volunteers can understand what it even means. But this is what they're essentially forcing on us in order to avoid the town running up another several hundred thousand dollars in legal expenses for no benefit to the town. Even if we win this case, there's no benefit to the town. It's purely, you know, political spite. The lawsuit was near the cease and desist letter, and the whole lawsuit process was initiated on the exact same day that a highly overlapping group of people formed a PAC to oppose three incoming council members who would be running for reelection. It's impossible not to draw the link between those two things. And the result is that this political action, which could have been done collegially, the Portola Valley way, but that attempt was rebuffed again and again by them, has cost the taxpayers over fifty thousand dollars plus inordinate amounts of time, staff, and attention. So, you know, we are where we are. We are where we would have been if we had gone through the process the other way, although we probably would have ended up with a better policy than the one that we're all about to approve because we would have actually had time to reflect on it and think through how to draft it thoughtfully. But, you know, ultimately, I agree with my fellow council members. We we have to agree to the settlement, move on from it, and get on with running the town's business the way that it's always been done. I'm hopeful that we will be able to draft a better version of this policy in the future and that we will be able to rescind this declaration and replace it with one that makes more sense for the town and that our town volunteers have had an opportunity to opine on and buy into. I do note that none of the complainants in this lawsuit are, in fact, town volunteers. None of them serve on any of our committees. None of them have ever been involved with the process of organizing or running any of these town meetings. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we can go back to the way that Portola Valley used to operate. And then I'm used to seeing it operate through all the time that I've been living in town and involved in in-town affairs and filing lawsuits to bully each other into doing what a small minority of people want is not the way we do things. We do things by discussion. We do it by consensus, and we do it by all agreeing on how to proceed. And this is the complete opposite of that, and it really upsets me. But, you know, it's really the only option we have in the face of this bullying from these eight residents is to agree to pay fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money in order to avoid having to pay hundreds of thousands more. So with that, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I assume that the motion is to do what Cara wants us to do. Cara, what is the motion?
The motion is to authorize the mayor to sign the unconditional commitment letter that's attached as exhibit A to the settlement agreement.
So I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the unconditional commitment letter.
I will second that motion.
Okay, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Durin?
Yes, under protest.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes, I hold my nose, but I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
It's the most painful yes vote I've ever had to make, but I vote yes too.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for bearing with us through that. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. That is the end of our agenda for today. Thank you all for being here.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.